Oh, the landfill fees?
Yes.
Oh, okay, come up here. You two. Our treasurer has another appointment, so.
Yes, we do.
We need to go to that. All right, so we had asking for landfill fees being taken off a couple of weeks ago. We had a discussion in the past about charging for landfill fees because they're not taxes, they're a fee, and even if you're tax exempt, you should pay landfill fees. That's our conversation.
Okay, I guess I'm on. Anita Hynek, county assessor. Excuse me, I have actually done some research, and we probably are going to have some more that we're going to ask to be canceled, and my reasoning behind that, or our reasoning behind that is, we haven't set up a schedule where all the, I know that it's been asked that we charge everybody, nonprofits, everybody, but we haven't come to that decision yet. And so there's like probably maybe fifteen or twenty that need to be canceled, and so I personally would like to see them canceled this year for 2024, and then going forward, have planned to figure this out because there's a lot involved in doing that. I'm not opposed to do that, and neither is Jennifer, but we need to make sure that our eyes are dotted and our teeth are crossed, so I guess I feel like if we don't cancel these twenty parcels, that's really not fair to the other people, that we aren't charging at this point. So for 2024, I would like to see them canceled, and then going forward, figure out how we're going to do this, because we have a lot of entities out there. If you're going to tax everybody, we have the state of Idaho, we probably have federal government for FBI, I mean, we need to figure out how we're going to do all this, and I would suggest maybe we put together a committee to look at all these entities and how we're going to do it, and go forward from there. So that's my suggestion, and that's how I feel.
My concern doing this is that we're going to have all of these bills being sent out for the fifty dollars or a hundred and fifty dollars. If it's a mobile home, they have a bill for fifty dollars that's just the fee. They don't pay it, it gets turned to the sheriff for collection. We can't sell their trailer because of a fee. It's not taxes. Same thing with tax deed, if they go four years delinquent, it's a lot of work throughout those four years, and then we get to that point, and we can't do anything because it's a fee.
I have reached out to some of the other counties. Most of them were small counties that responded, and some of the, and they all do it, they all do put those fees on, and sometimes it's the clerk that actually bills those fees rather than through a tax bill. Same with like the Native Americans, they do bill those fees, but they do it through a different.
They have an Excel spreadsheet that they keep track of it.
Yeah, that they use to bill because of, because of, once people see it as a tax, they're not going to pay it, so it goes out differently. So there's some, there's some really great ideas from some of the other counties, but I do think that we need to really look at this in depth, and maybe, like I said, put together some sort of committee, but for right now, I think we both like to see these canceled just because of the fact that we're not doing it to everybody, just to, and it was.
How come we're not doing it to everybody?
Right.
That's my question.
Why aren't we?
Yeah.
Because they never have.
We never have before ever.
On exempt properties.
Yeah.
On anything.
But we did talk about it last year. Time to go forward and do it.
The work that it's going to take to figure out who needs it and how many parcels, I mean, how do you go back on parcels that haven't had value forever and then determine how to put them on? That's, I think, that's our concern.
We wouldn't be putting the value, but we would be putting on the fee, and we would have to, and our office would have to identify each one of those parcels, because like, I'm going to just take, for example, City of Pocatello, if you were to decide to, that we were going to put a fee on all their properties, we would have to find, we would have to identify every parcel that had an improvement on it, because you can't put a fee on bare ground for landfill. It has to be an improved property. So we would have to identify every, and we'd have to make sure that it's not just a well building, that it's actually an entity that has.
Dumpster.
A dumpster, and so it's going to take some work. I'm not saying it's impossible, because it's not, but it's going to take some work. Are we going to do it same down south of county? Is Arimel going to be charged, Lava, Downey? And in those cases, we're going to have to identify everything that's on down there by, that has an improvement on it. So it's going to take, I'm not, like I said, it's not impossible, we can do it, but it's not something that we can just do in a month's time. It's something that we have to really look at, so.
So, well, last year, we started looking at all these tax exempts, and everybody else in the county pays fifty dollars or a hundred and fifty dollars for landfill service. Well, we got all these tax exempt that still utilize our landfill, and that is one of the biggest bills that we have. We spend two million dollars a year in remediation out there, and we got all these people that are utilizing that facility for free, and in my opinion, that's not right to the other taxpayers in Banning County, or to foot all the bill for the landfill, and so.
So do we have a feel for the impact of what we're just talking about?
Not at this point, until we identify all those properties.
So even these twenty parcels that we just talked about?
Oh, on that's a thousand dollars.
So we're kicking this can down the road for a thousand dollars right now that's going to require a bunch of labor, and how much, how much labor are we going to kick down the road? That's what I'm just trying to say, how much, how much labor and time are we going to kick down the road to collect maybe a third of that, or half of that? Because do we have the teeth to go after it? As I say, then we're tying up the sheriff's department, we're tying up the, our resources all over the county to collect a thousand dollars.
Well, it's more than a thousand dollars.
No. The impact of what we're just doing.
Yeah, this little bit, but.
But then down the road, do you know how many properties this has, any idea with your cities, with all of that other stuff?
I don't at this point. We can look at it and maybe come up with a rough estimate of what it would be, yeah, but at this point.
We have over a hundred parcels that apply for tax exempt every year.
But when you're talking, you're talking ISU, because you're going to have to, we have to, so, okay, so I have lots of questions that we probably have to get with the city and ask the city to help us a little bit, because I don't know how many dumpsters they have, do we go by dumpsters, do we go by improvement building? And there's just a lot of questions involved in this that we need to really look at. In my opinion, we need to look at it really closely, because maybe ISU only has, to say in this, ten dumpsters, but they have thirty buildings. So we need to figure out if we can work with the city to figure out what we're doing here. I just think there's more to this than just saying, you're a nonprofit, you get a hundred and fifty dollar charge. I think there's more to this than.
And I would agree with that.
Yeah.
But we've talked about it for a year and haven't done anything, so now it's time to do something, one way or another. What are you doing messaging?
Probably better turn my. So let's just restate this. You two are elected officials. What's your recommendation going forward?
On, on the cancellation ones?
Yeah, let's deal with what we're doing.
On the cancellation ones.
The next is, it's not on our agenda to talk about the future, but for this particular stuff that has put you back on the agenda, what are your two recommendations to the, to the commissioners? How do we deal with this?
This is money that we're never going to collect, I feel, and again, that we can't go after them for tax deed or warrant of restraint, so, because it's a fee, it's not taxes. So on pending issue, or on tax deeds, I mean, that's four years of fifty dollars trying to be collected for four years, collecting interest, collecting late fees, well, it would be fifty dollars per year, to never have a resolution, because they're not going to pay it.
So you're basically saying we're stooping over a dollar to pick up a dime.
I mean, what you said just a minute ago.
That's an expression, but I mean.
Right.
We've got to be careful we're not doing that.
The work that it's going to take to determine all of this information, to maybe collect an additional, I don't know, say five hundred thousand in landfill fees. It could be more than that, it probably would be more than that, but I don't know how much.
Which is the lease for one year on a dozer.
Okay. But when you consider the, the work and time and that one person's going to have to put into it, well, not one person, but.
But, but we're not talking about five hundred thousand on what we just, that we're in front of.
No.
Let's narrow down to the point at hand, the decision that we made a couple of weeks ago, based on that, what was the impact of that decision? I agree we need to go forward and figure something out, but that's not going to solve what we need to solve today in today's agenda.
Right now, we have, it's probably a little over a thousand, it might be, because I found a couple more this morning, so about fifteen hundred maybe dollars is what we're going to probably end up asking to be canceled for 2024.
And what's the chance of collecting, how much of that we're going to collect if we don't?
None.
Okay, so.
Because when the school district receives a bill that has a landfill fee on it, they call us and say, why did we get this?
Already dealt with.
And so in the event that we go forward with this, we would have to put out some kind of memo or explanation to all of these people that have never gotten bills, that they're going to start getting bills, so that they're aware of it, because otherwise, they're just going to ignore it.
Which, and I think there should be a discussion about moving forward, is there a better way to assess fees versus, you know, using the tax thing? I, I agree, there's probably something going forward, but I think what's on the agenda today is what do we do about our decision that we made two weeks ago? Because we did exempt them. Is that the right word?
We passed it.
Yeah, we didn't.
Tell this discussion.
Yeah, we didn't excuse that debt. We kept them on there. So I guess our decision right now is whether we go back and, you know, put an action on there today to, under your recommendation, to go ahead and eliminate these fees off of the parcels that were before us a couple of weeks ago. Is that, is that what we're here today for? I agree that down the road, we've.
Just as a conversation for landfill fees.
Right, okay, so, but we're not prepared to make decisions on the future, because we've got to have some more input.
I was going to say, for a decision in the future, we probably need to come up with some more definite parameters and just some ideas better, and the other thing that happens, which, and I don't, I'm not the one who collects taxes, so I can't really speak to this, but on the nonprofits right now, they don't get a bill at all, so all of a sudden, they're going to get a bill for fifty dollars, and all they're going to do is, they're going to call us. So we need to make sure that this is really put out there, and we can use Lise, our, our public information officer, a ton with this. I think she could get involved in this to figure out ways to get that out there, that this is going to happen. I definitely think, if we do that, it needs, and it's honestly, it's not going to impact my office. My, all my office has to do is identify these properties for you guys. That's all I have to do. Jennifer has to collect them, so it's kind of, it's, yeah.
It seems like to me, moving forward, that it would be a good idea, I mean, I, I think it would be a good idea to take this recommendation for today, but then, moving forward, having Anita's office do a high-level view, where, I mean, five hundred thousand dollars was just drawn out a minute ago, and we have no idea if that's even in the ballpark, but we need somebody to, to, to do a high-level view, so we can get to an approximate dollar amount that makes it even worth it or not, for the amount of work when the rubber hits the road, and it's actually time to assess for every property, but we need some good, solid, close estimates, so we can decide if it's even worth it or not, in my view.
And, and I would agree a hundred percent with that, especially where we're looking at, maybe even putting on, on fees on the tribals, that's going to take some definite work to figure out what we've got there, and so, and we need some parameters, as whether, like I said, you're looking at the FBI buildings, or you're looking at ISU, or you're looking at, what are we definitely looking at? And I know you're seeing everybody, but that's pretty vague for me, because I need to know what exactly I'm looking at to come up with some.
So it's pretty simple. I'll go ahead and take the lead on this. I'll take the assignment on this, and I'll work with Anita and her department, and we'll move forward on it. And we'll work on, for, we'll work on it for next year. This year, we'll keep as is, but it isn't a dead horse.
And I.
That's fine. We just need to know.
Yeah.
Well, we don't know what we don't know.
We don't know what we don't know.
Until we, we do do a study, but, so do we need to act upon what we did a couple of weeks ago?
That'll have to be brought before us.
Yeah, so if we put that on another agenda item or whatever.
Add that to the ones that you found.
Yeah. Identify those and make your recommendation and put it on the agenda.
Okay? That should come back probably next Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
All right.
You okay with that, Shannon? You're standing there, you've got eyes furrowed there.
Jen.
Jen, Jen, I don't know why you're Shannon to me forever. Okay?
Yes, sir.
I was looking around the room.
I was just seeing if anybody was paying attention, so, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, while you're here, let's go ahead and have a discussion on parcel P, or R P R I C P one zero 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 three zero two.
Kristy Davenport, management assistant. This is a parcel that has been brought to the commissioners before with the City of Income. It's one that Jeremy could offer a little bit more light on how it became the way it is, but it's basically one parcel number with four pieces, and we have a person interested, well, we would need to put, okay, let's start with Jeremy. Jeremy, will you describe why it is the way it is?
So this is a remainder of what's been parsed off at, over time, so there was a bigger piece of parcel, and, and over time, sections were deeded out, and this is what was left over, and it has been put under one parcel number and actually even assigned just a single tax number from what I can see.
There is no legal description, and so when we talked to the City of Income, we asked if they would survey it. They do not, they're not interested in that, so Tristan has a solution for the surveying.
Yeah, so we have Stuart Ward, who is one of our reviewing surveyors contracted with the county. He's done a little bit of research on what we can do to survey this, to see if any of it is right-of-way, that could just be vacated, or if they are just odd lots that need to be listed and given or sold to property owners, and I have, Stuart Ward has come today, so if you have any questions for him, he can come up here as well.
Come on up.
Stuart, why don't you have a seat here?
Do you have questions for me, or do you want me to just go through what I think may be a solution?
Just so that everybody kind of is on the same plane and I'm understanding. These are four different parcels, is it four or five? Four?
Four.
Four. One of them is between the bank and the Village Mart, one of them is Park Street, one of them is between the caboose and another residence, and that gentleman just passed away a couple of months ago, and then the other one is Stevens Street. That it, so the City of Ecom, we should, we need to divide these up and give the City of Ecom Park Street and Stuart, or Stevens Street. And then the other two pieces of parcel, we have a family that has a caboose, they're interested in the piece that's right next to them. The other piece, actually, the city has talked to me about that in the past, and that gave them a walkway to their park between the bank and the, so that's the properties we're talking about.
And I do have an image if you need a visual.
Okay. So let's talk about, how do we split these up and what do we do?
So initially, I, and it's, it's not official, but there is an old, it doesn't even have a date on it, but it's Keystone Edition to Ecom Townsite that shows individual lots and right-of-way for Stevens Street and Park Street. So initially, I was, I thought, well, that's going to be a piece of cake, it's already plotted right-of-way, but the deeds of all the properties in between the streets are all meets and bounds, they're not lot and block. And so digging into a little further, it's, it's not going to be as easy as I thought. There's like two surveys on that whole stretch, and not saying it's not doable, it's just, it's not going to be quick. One, one survey is on the bank that was done like the early, early eighties, I think, and then there was another one closer to Stevens Street that was done late nineties. This one does actually show a deed for Stevens Street, that little piece on Stevens Street, but I haven't pulled that deed yet. And, and so I understand to dispose of the property, you need a meets and bounds description or a lot and block description to, to transfer that property, which I totally get. The, the, obviously, the simple way to do it is hope that Stevens and Park is just already right-of-way and just transfer that to the City of Ecom, and those, those two are easy, and then the other two, we'd have to do a full survey on, but it is interesting that there's a map, I found a map dated December nineteen eighty-four of the City of Ecom that shows all of those lots and blocks from Keystone Edition. But the issue is that none of the properties are actually transferred that way. So it's, it's going to be a lot of, a lot of figuring out deeds and who owns what, but essentially, because we're dealing on between a part, a piece of property between Stevens and Park, and then a piece of property between Park and.
Main.
Main Street, we essentially have to reconfigure every single one of those parcels along that, that right-of-way to figure out what's remaining that the county owns. So it's going to be a process, and not a quick process. I don't know, Hal just talked to me about this like late last week, so I've kind of been digging into it a little bit here and there since I talked to him. I don't have a cost proposal yet, but I don't anticipate it being cheap because of all that work.
Well, I think that we need to know the cost. I mean.
Right.
It's been this way forever. I mean, used to have apartments right there across all of it, and a gas station right there where the bank is.
Kelly's?
Yep. So I know that's not the answer you want to hear, but, I'm talking in the background, but we got to see what it's going to cost the county, and whether it's worthwhile to, to move forward with this, in my opinion.
So my question of it is, if, if the guys with the caboose want the property, and if the City of Ecom wants the property, are they willing to pay the cost?
City of Ecom already told us no.
So then what's the problem with leaving it on the county register? Like you say, if, if it's going to cost a bunch of money, is it going to, if we're not interested in paying that fee, and if the city's not interested in paying the fee, what's the worst that can happen, other than it's?
And the truth of the matter is, if we divide this all up, we can give property to the city, we can't just sell property to the owners of the caboose. It has to go up for public auction, and so there's no guarantee who would get that property either, so that's, that's another question. So I think that right now, we just kind of, if you'd investigate a little bit, kind of come up with a, a fee, so that we can at least have a communication, at least with the City of Ecom, and say, would you be willing to pay part or all, or at least we'd have some numbers to go and talk to them about.
I should be able to have that to, back to Hal and to you by early, mid next week.
Okay.
I have, I have an idea that, that I'm going to talk with Legal about it, and I'll, I'll get with you about it. I have an idea that might work.
But, but without it, some fees, we're, we're going to have a direction.
We've got some more homework to do, I think.
Right.
All right. So you're going to put together like a bid or something?
Yeah, I'll put together a scope of work and the cost, and send that to Hal and Christine, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, good with that.
Scott, come on up.
Probably not too many people remember the old Catterys Cafes and Harleys.
Yeah?
Good morning. Uh, Scott Crowder, event manager, or event, whatever, coordinator, business manager.
Oh, I'm Connie Nguyen, I'm the fourth district high school rodeo queen coordinator.
So every year Connie comes up and they, they run their queen contest in Building B in the indoor, they use it during the morning on April fifth, and she is asking for the fees of two hundred and ten dollars to be waived for this event. I went kind of short, do you want to talk a little bit about the event?
Um, I, I have two girls from fourth district, and I, the seventh district has also reached out to me in having their, you know, two or three girls come down and run their contest with mine, and stuff like that, so what I would do is from eight to nine, we'll be at the indoor arena doing the horsemanship, and so that way we're out of there before the Lord of the Dark starts their roping or breakaway or whatever they have that day. And then from there, we'll go up to Building B and do the remainder of the contest, which will be the speech, the modeling, the test, and the interview, and also crown, and I should be out of there probably by one o'clock. And it's all open to the public except for the interview part.
We've done this for the past few years.
Yes, sir.
And.
Any, any costs to where it's opened?
The only, the only cost that we have would be grooming the arena, but we, but like you said, it, it's kind of on the front side of an all-day event, so we groom up for that event, and they pay full fees as well, so it really doesn't add any cost to us, but that, if there is a fee, that would be it, and, and obviously, just making sure B building is clean, but that's.
I make, I make the motion, we waive the fees for the high school rodeo queen.
Thank you.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We've got one more that we hadn't.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Kindy Cannonan, there's some of you that have been before, some I haven't, I'm the head rodeo coach for the ISU rodeo team, men's and women's.
So we've long been the, the home of Idaho State Rodeo, Idaho State University Rodeo, and we, we enjoy working with Kindy. I think that, you know, every year, we kind of come before you guys with the contract and the cost for the contract, and we try to keep it about the same, the rate about the same. There is a fee reduction on there for the, for the use of the venue. I know Kindy's worked pretty hard with us to try to come up with ways to help us to justify those fee reductions, so I'm trying to find the place where we talked a little bit about that. It's the very last page. So one of the, one of the, kind of the, the challenges to this, to this contract is, one, their fiscal year, or their, their year goes from fall to spring, and we've always done their contracts based off of an annual year, so we kind of end in the middle of a contract year for these guys, which is happening right now, so we've already got kids showing
So, we've already got kids showing up for this year for the spring, and we haven't got the contract in place. So, what we wanna do is on this contract, we wanna run three and a half, three and a half years. So, we start covering on that half-year cycle to make sure we get them in their budget cycle, in their school cycle. The other challenge that we have is, is over the last few years, the group of kids that come and are part of the rodeo club expands or contracts, right? So, we might write a contract that says, you know, 50 stalls. I'm just using that as an example. And one year, they might have 60 kids, the next year, they might have 40. So, it's kind of a contracting, expanding contract. And in the past, I've received permission to just kind of contract and expand with them, right? So, we, some years, we're a little bigger, some years, we're a little smaller. From a cost standpoint, it doesn't really change a lot of our lives, right? These guys are really good about keeping their stalls clean and keeping everything mucked up. And then, they do help out a ton with any volunteer efforts that we have at the venue. This year, we actually threw in an advertising amount to reduce some of the fee as well. And Kindy could talk a little bit about the advertising. And then, we talked about the VIP tickets for both nights of the rodeos. She talked about throwing in some VIP tickets for some of our elected officials. And it might be something we wanna... We could maybe negotiate that up, maybe a couple more.
Yeah, that's definitely negotiable. Like this last year, it was great to have the mayor come out, things like that. So, we feed them, we get hospitality. It's a meet and greet too, so you guys get to actually like meet my kids and put faces with who you're saying yes or no to. And that's very important with me is that my kids have that one-on-one connection. So, we do it at our rodeo. So, you know who your... You can put a face with the name and the people, and you see who's competing. And for ISU, I know you guys have a great relationship with ISU, and I wanna keep it that way.
So, does the City of Pocatello donate anything to this? I'm sorry. You just brought up the mayor, I just wondered.
No, so, but like, that was the first time that I've... Honestly, it caught me off-guard because I've never been reached out one time in the last five years I've coached to even like see that type of support, if that makes sense? Because he's very involved with athletics, like football, basketball. But seeing that side of like actually taking the time and showing rodeo kinda, you know, is kinda surprising. But that's something like for you guys, like I wanna be able to... What our dream of it is for our rodeo is obviously a lot more local commitment. We had a great turnout this last year. Great turnouts, however, have led to more expenses. Like, our rodeo cost for two days was over $34,000 to host a two-day competition. That eats up my budget substantially. And then, also, about three weeks ago, I was informed that I'm getting $22,000 from my budget cut like that. And I have till May to come up with an extra $22,000 to cover our costs of all spring. I am in a season right now where my men's and women's teams are number one. I have kids sitting number one in the nation. And we are putting Pocatello on the map once again, NISU. But then, trying to rally the support behind them is almost... It gets harder and harder every year, and it's... I don't see it getting easier in any way, shape, or form, but I'm not afraid of a challenge every year. And so, if we can keep the commitment and... Like, with you guys, it's great because it's a great advertisement too. Like, we have a wonderful practice facility. We're very lucky, unlike many, many colleges and universities that I know and go to. And so, that's kind of a recruiting standpoint also. Like, we have these facilities, this amendments, like you have Lodom in the Dark very... Throughout the week, numerous days. So, some of the kids even can go work with Chris and things like that and make extra money, and then go to class. They've just been really great, and I just wanna figure out a way that we can continue. And with our huge budget costs and loss now, I don't know how to continue that without asking for some type of forgiveness and discounts, if that makes sense. So, from like a social media and marketing, what we're doing is really gonna try to stamp Vanette County Event Center on everything that we do through social media, through our websites. We've got two different websites. And really promote you guys and give you extra promotion also because we got a new social media manager that's supposed to take over, I think, by next Monday, actually, and really start pushing things daily. I'm not gonna lie, I don't love social media. It's hard for me to figure out, but it's where we're at in the world of marketing. And so, if you're going, not going forwards, we're going backwards. And so, that's the way that we've gotta go. If it's helping with getting your concerts and things like that promoted also, like I think that's a big way because ISU has a very large following. And then, now, we're also with Learfield College Rodeo, which is on a national level. So, then, they can also push some of our stuff too, so you're getting more national exposure also, so...
So, the fee is $12,000?
Yes, $12,000.
And what are you asking to pay?
No, the fee is $21,000. We're asking to pay 12.
And on this back page, it has a total to pay is $11,500.
Well, then, that must be what we're asking to pay. I thought it was 12, and the contract is 12. This is just we reduced it to, but the 12 is what we're suggesting.
Okay.
I would even go for 10.
Can I ask you?
Yeah.
What percentage of your ISU students are local?
Honestly, majority of my team. I have five out-of-staters. It's kinda interesting. So, I've got, I've had this year, one from Alaska, one from California, one from Oregon, one from Washington, and then, one from Wyoming. Everyone else is here very local. So, not necessarily Pocatello, but surrounding. So, we have Downey kids, Soda Springs. I have kids coming from Rexburg, Idaho Falls, American Falls. I do have a couple from Pocatello specifically, but that wasn't a thing at first when I started coaching. These local kids weren't staying because we weren't giving them the opportunities and the amenities. And so, my goal is to try to keep these local and keep these Idaho kids that come here for the high school state finals here. We don't wanna send them to Texas. I'm tired of sending them to Texas.
I agree.
So, we've gotta somehow become more competitive with keeping our locals in-state versus them being offered extra amount to go to Texas and New Mexico and Arizona and things like that. So, by working together with facilities and doing stuff and creating structure, that is my goal, is to keep the locals here.
Okay.
And we do see that, like the high school rodeo finals, there are people there recruiting Idaho kids all across the country. And we're dumb because our staff, we all try to talk them into staying. You guys need to stick around.
We always, I'm at the college finals during the high school finals because for some reason, they overlap those, our Idaho State Finals and the college finals. So, I tend to watch... I recruit throughout the year, and then, I watch my kids. They have a live feed now that I can watch them in between my Slack at the college finals and there. But for the most part, I have to try to build those relationships a year in advance anyway. Because I don't have the budget to say, hey, I can give you a full ride scholarship. Like, the kids that have invested in this program have more so invested in me than the university, if that makes sense? Because I can't give them the world, so in return of like, okay, we're gonna have a great practice facility, great stalling, we're close to the university, that's a way to kinda bring them in versus other programs where they might have to haul 30 minutes to a different facility and spend the fuel money and things like that. So, that's kind of how I've gotten to go in. And then, I don't have any kid on full ride scholarship. It's actually really frustrating. Like, these kids are investing a lot of their own money just to be a part of this and a start like... Our program is actually in its 75th year, but most people don't realize that. The ISU rodeo team has been here since 1950. Our first national champion was in 1951. No one in Pocatello seems to know that. So, it's one of those things I want to really advertise and get more of the agricultural surrounding communities, Pingree, Aberdeen, American Falls, like bring them into Vanette County, like especially for our rodeo food sales and then hotels and things like that. Like, we are trying to bring those outside sources in to Vanette County specifically and help kinda everybody, but in return, try to get them to help us too if we're helping them because it can't just be a one-way street, so...
Okay, thank you.
So, this is a three-year deal?
Three and a half, three point five.
Yeah, three point five.
So, I have a question about that. Is with that, with the discounts, it's still a net positive for the county?
Yeah, oh yeah.
So, there's no possibility of needing additional appropriation of funds in order to execute the contract?
Oftentimes, when they come in like the spring and stay in the fall, like we don't have stall rentals that conflict. It's not like we're, there's a... That we're losing money by having them show up. And then, all of the stall maintenance is really done by the kids. And so, there's really... For us, it's the grooming every day. That's the actual cost, the wear and tear on the tractors, that kinda stuff, which gets spread out by every event that we have up there. And so, we're not losing money on the contract, that's for sure.
So, I'd say year one, $10,000, year two, $11,000, year three, $12,000. That'll help you with your 22 cut.
That helps me even get two grand ahead of schedule.
That will help you.
Works for me.
Any thoughts of that? The other deal in this contract, in attachments A, B, and C on four, no money goes to the fairgrounds. Fairgrounds are in Downey. All funds go to the event center. And everywhere else in there, it says the event center.
I didn't type it.
But...
That's actually our contract.
When I went through that, we need to take that out of there. I don't, I don't want another group claiming funds from the rodeo.
Good catch.
Works for me, so is that a motion?
I'll make that in a motion.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
More than you guys know. So, I expect all of you at our rodeo this fall, okay?
Well, you might need to get more of those VIP tickets.
Oh, lovely.
The thing is, is they bring in a food vendor and they have like an area back behind the shoots. So, it would be essentially getting a free meal.
Right next to the pitchforks, sir.
It's not crazy about it.
Awesome. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Yep, thank you.
But it is Vanette County, home of ISU rodeo.
It is. It is. Make sure ISU knows that too. Do you want to redo the wording before I sign?
Um, we... Yeah, I won't give redoing.
Okay, I'll see you this afternoon.
Okay.
And then, the amounts?
Yeah, we'll change it. So, this is a contract, an independent contractor contract that we tried out last year. This is something that Chaney has worked on, and so, I will let her take the lead on it.
Chaney Carter, event manager.
Yeah, my name's Daniel Silva. I'm the owner of H208 Excursions.
So, last year, we started late in the year. Daniel installed a, well, set up a paddleboard rental system on the beach at the lake pond, whatever we call it.
Presidio. Yeah.
So, we're just looking to get that started again. We're just keeping the same fee, the vendor fee that he pays monthly, and then, the 3% of total sales every month that he makes. We left it the same because we didn't really give him enough time last year to see if the system works. So, we wanna start in May this year rather than July, when we started last year.
It was like end of July, 'cause we missed the 4th, which is gonna be like the biggest day of the year, but...
And so, in these situations, we've talked about making sure that the fees are paid ahead of some of the events. Some people wanna come and have their event, and then, we don't have the fees paid. Any concerns there, Christie?
So, you're gonna pay with the last... What date are you gonna pay?
I put the 30th of each month.
Okay. Well, you know yourselves, though? Or is it like for the month of May, you'll pay us by June 30th, is that...
Correct.
Well, you met 30th. Unless you want a hard date on it, we could do that. So, if he installs on May and then pays us May 30th, he pays for that month.
But would you have yourselves information by May 30th?
Yeah, it's tracked on the app every day.
But you're gonna have a day's lag type?
Right.
So, would you be better off having you pay like the 5th?
Um, yeah, if you can give me a week. Because then, it gets processed through the Highwater. That's who the parent company is. So, they process all the payments, everything, and then, they give me a summary at the end of the month. And they don't pay me until the mid of the next month. But I'll have all the numbers and we could pay percentages before I get paid, that's not a problem.
If we could do like the 10th of the following month? That way, you have all your information, and you're not having a day of lag here and there. I think that would just make things confusing.
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay. Is that okay?
That's fine, that's fine.
In this scenario, that's the only way you can do it. The only other thing we could do is say, in May, you would give us a deposit of $90 or a prepayment of $90 for the month of May. But then, that's gonna get confusing. So, just the 10th of June, you'd make your first payment.
Okay.
Do you want that to...
The 10th of every month after that, just...
Yeah.
Do you want that to include the 90 vendor fee?
Yeah, I think it's just easier to pay $90 plus your sales.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, any concerns?
The only thing that I would do is if you needed to pay for the fee for that month, but then, you'd pay for the percentage by the 10th of the following month.
With the next month's deposit.
Because that way, you have a fee you're paying in advance on the 1st of May for May, but then, come June 10th, you're gonna pay your 3%.
And then, your last month, you'll remove it in October, so your last month, you would only pay the sales portion, the 3%.
That way, we get our money upfront, but the reconciliation with sales by the 10th of the month.
The 90, is it 90 a month, right?
Yes.
I'll just pay that at the beginning of every month?
I would feel better about that. And then, by the 10th of the following month...
Then, you cash up on the sales.
Yeah, then we make the additional. That would... That's how I would see that. Is that a problem for you guys?
I was trying to save him from writing us two checks a month.
Yeah, but I agree with Commissioner that, you know...
It's clean.
I just assume make it clean and have you pay upfront for that next month's service.
Yeah.
Then, we know we have a contract that really has a contract.
Yeah, so we did last year. I think I paid the whole couple of months ahead of time.
Yeah, because we only had a couple of months.
Nobody's gonna tell you, you can't pay the monthlies ahead of time, but by the 10th of the following month, we need the reconciliation with the commissions, the 3%.
Yeah.
The 90 is the typical vendor fee. We try to be all vendor fee, so it's still all the same.
So, it's consistent with doing it that way. That's where I would make that recommendation.
So, do you leave these paddleboards there all night?
Yeah, yeah.
And who's responsible and the liability and...
He has cameras. We have the... His, this is what is on the kiosk when somebody rents it.
Yeah, those are the terms and conditions anyone has to agree to before they're able to rent the equipment from the kiosk. So, they take full liability also, carry the million-dollar liability policy. I take all the responsibility at the end if someone gets hurt, that's my own insurance.
So, they're not locked up at night?
Oh, they are.
Okay.
Yeah.
They're pretty pretty dude.
It's like a locker system, the paddleboard stand up.
Okay.
They're locked in, and you have to use an app to interact with the locks to lock and rent it. So, we have camera system set up and it's got video and audio recording, so that's covered there.
But we're held harmless.
Correct.
Hundred percent.
That was an indemnification.
I was gonna say, somebody will see you in court and we'll see how well they stand up. Everybody at court thinks they're right. Anyway.
Not currently, because I canceled the policy because it's gonna only run from, well, this year, it'll be May, October, so it will be enforced.
So, is this the H208?
Yeah.
So, can we get a copy of the insurance? Yes, absolutely. So, if that policy in place, I'll...
We put all those copies, or we put all the insurance copies we get into rec desk for all of our contracts. And so, we talked about that last year, maybe give the next rec desk. But before, when you guys, the copies, we will...
Okay, so I'll make the motion that we go ahead and sign the agreement with H208 with the fees upfront, vendor fees, and by the 10th of the month, the balance due on the sales.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Pour enough soil and water.
It's the piss to get on. Wow, and that door opens, the cold air comes rushing in.
I was wondering if our heat wasn't working today. The hallways are cold.
I think the breeze is blowing up my skirt.
Charity Stags, administrator, and this is Dave Jackson, our treasurer of Port Nozzle and Water Conservation District. We are here to request support funds and to provide an update of our year. We've had a really busy year. We've acquired grants for Hawkins Pipeline Project, which was completed. We acquired funds for Cone Creek Restoration Project, which was completed. We have started Dempsey Creek Project that's set to... We have started Dempsey Creek Project that's set to complete this summer. And we've started Pocatello Creek, just barely, we've got a pending grant that we should hear back from this summer. And we are still supporting our environmental, our Envirethon teams and our local educators. Our return on investment, for every dollar of support funds we received last year, we were able to bring in twenty-six. And a annual reminder that any support funds that we receive, the state can match up to two. Last year, they matched it 1.6, which we were really, really blessed for that. So, we're really grateful for the support funds last year, and this year, we're requesting the same.
Okay, so who's on your board now?
Scott, Dave, Kevin Coster, Scott Henderson, Justin Casperson, and Brad Carr.
And they sent you guys into the line of fire and didn't come with you?
Well, they got that nasty flu going around, unfortunately, so...
My ask is fifteen thousand dollars, and that what's budgeted. That's what we've been doing.
Yeah.
Any concerns?
Nope, they've been around a long time.
Eighty-four years.
Yep.
Once the board signs this donation, whatever this report is, the letter of support, you can, Christie can hold that, and then, he comes out as an invoice.
She has the invoice downstairs, she said.
I didn't see it in the package, so...
Yeah, she, there's a note on here, says she has the invoice.
Thought that might be a little easier.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we authorize Mr. Moser to sign this agreement, and we start the process to dispense the money.
Thank you so much.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Kyle!
Last one in the room.
Kyle Bernister, Public Works Director.
Dana Evans, mosquito abatement supervisor. Welcome.
If you guys don't care, we'll start with our drone contract that we have on there. Kind of give you a little bit of a brief on what this is. I agree with Joseph Johnson on some of the concerns on it. When we buy a drone, part of their deal is that they get us all registered the first time through the state and FAA, and they pay for it all. If we do it on our own, it requires quite a bit of work, and we're getting kind of on a timed schedule of getting it done to be able to start flying in the screen. What this agreement is, is giving them the authority to register it, and then, that's all that we do with them. Otherwise, we're, we have to come up, it's kind of like flying an airplane, you have to have all of what, yes, is what we're doing, is the bonus exemption. You're building all of these, if you lose power, if you do this, and so, it's quite a pretty good-sized little document that we need to build. But Dana can kind of tell you where we're at with that.
So, right now, I've got all the Idaho licenses done. I've got the FAA drone pilot license done. I've got it registered with the FAA. So, now, the next thing to do, we have to file the exemptions, because it's over fifty-five pounds, and get an agricultural exemption. And this is where this comes into effect. When Bannet County purchased the drone, it's included, it's included with it. They, I just give them the information, my pilot license, the registration number, the N-number for the drone, and then, they file the exemption for us. And any, these documents, I've got, I did print a couple, just for examples, they go anywhere from twenty-three to thirty pages. And they file all that for us, they then let us know, yes, it's been approved, and then, they help me fill out the Form 137, that gets sent in, and then, we're issued a certificate for that, and then, we're legal to fly. With the exemption, that could take anywhere two months plus. So, we're kind of, we're right at the very last part of this, and hopefully, we can get it going, and I can do some mosquito abatement, you know, with the drone.
So, how many, how many waterways, ponds, or whatever, do you do in a year with those drones?
I haven't done any with the drone yet. I was just hired in April of last year, so I went right into the season, and I had, since I didn't have any licenses, I didn't get any done. It was all manually. But there's out in Swan Lake, Blazer Highway, Highway 30, there's areas I couldn't get to, because it was just too big, too fast, but there's quite a bit.
Do you have any issues with, because that's the only way you can get into that property? I mean, that's why we do those drones, is get into places that you couldn't get a four-wheeler or anything else, because of either landowners or...
He hasn't got to see yet the advantages of that. We did have our last one wrecked, and we got the new one.
Trying to do loops on them, huh?
But it's, it's got avoidance control, I mean, you know how technology changes, but yeah, we can, this is all ran by a computer. It goes and flies, it comes back and lands right beside us, and we don't have to get out in the water.
Well, they've come a long way. Pellets, spray, what are you putting on?
Granulars.
Okay.
And with using the drone, we would use less, but get to do more. So, and it would, it's cost-effective.
So, the computer tells it exactly where to drop it?
Yes, I map it out, and then, I put in how much we want to put per acre, and then, the speed, the width, swath width, and it just goes, and then, it comes back for a refill, and just goes until it's done doing it.
So, when you hit areas like, say, like Swan Lake area and stuff like that, you have these big marshes, the only other way we have is by foot or by some of these watered vehicles.
An argo.
Argo and stuff, but it's, you're making them tracks out through there and everything, where we don't even have to touch the properties to do this.
So, and this is a combination drone? I mean, it is for weed and for mosquito, which is purchased by both.
So, we only have the pellet stuff right now, but we need to look at budget and getting a little spray bar for it, so that we can do weed.
So, what's the dimensions on it?
What's that, pardon me?
How big is it?
About as big as this square in the middle of this table.
So, you put it on a trailer and...
It kind of folds up, brings down to put it in the trailer. We have a trailer for it.
When you fold it out, it's probably good eight feet.
Really? Got to see it.
It'll, what it'll carry?
Actually, we had a day where they demonstrated it and stuff up at the pond, and flew it out over the pond and stuff, and had people come in and see what it was and stuff.
Last time I saw it, they did it in McCammon, you know, over what we call the slough, you know, and they just parked over there, and that's a long time ago, but they've come a long way since then.
So, John, you voiced some concerns on this.
I did. The representative clause was a little bit concerning to me, because I could foresee, I think you can answer this question, whether through that relationship, the representative would be binding the county to expend funds that aren't appropriate. That's my biggest concern with the contract. Can you speak to that, or do you have any answers on that?
Any funds that...
Yeah, because it's, it, by the operation of the contract, it designates Nicholas and Albert Hill as a representative of the county, gives them the authority to generate, submit, and sign documents on behalf of the client. Those documents could include terms and conditions that bind the county to pay out funds, and so, that's what, I don't have enough information yet on that aspect. The other two is the indemnification agreement and the choice of law. I don't want to see the county end up in Texas on any litigation related to this contract, and the indemnification is quite broad. And I'm wondering if Hialeah was willing to take out the indemnification clause and alter the choice of law clause to be the District Court of Idaho and Courts of the State of Idaho.
So, we've already kind of exhausted that, and they're not going to change it.
They're not going to change it.
They haven't had any problems with it, and pretty much what, I mean, it could be open to whatever, but pretty much what they're doing is that's, they have to show that to this FFA, or FAA, just to submit the form. That's what they're doing, there's no, there should be no expense, and...
Well, but I also kind of agree on the, where we're giving him our representation. There's no term that ends that.
Correct.
So, that's open ending until we cancel it. So, if you could even add a clause that it's only through getting this paperwork done, because how long's his ability to represent us? Well, you have to give her a notice that he can't anymore. Do you do that? Probably not, because things get...
And I would stick something like that in the terms and termination.
Once work's been performed, it's...
Because we are, it's unlimited right now.
Correct, it is. It is for the sole purpose of generating these documents and licensing the drone. It's not as expansive as I thought it was at first. However, the, I would like to see that limitation, that at some point, that authority terminates, the representative authority terminates, and also, that we're not giving any authority to this person to indent the county. Those are the two issues.
Understandable.
And then, the other two, I was just wondering if Tim kind of clarified some of them, because if it's against state statute for us to be indemnified, or, then, Tim would kind of take care of that, if any part of this violates...
And that is correct, that it's still better to have it, you know, written out if we can.
And I agree, I just trying to, because I understand we have time crunch here a little bit, but I was just wondering if we...
We can go and see if some of them would be changed. I think our Plan B is talking with them about why can they not just give us that document and let us file it? Why do they have to file it? And I mean, it saves them time, they're, they don't make no more money by filing it for us, so I mean, you would think, because all of that is, is pretty much a list out that you're following state statute on different things, so it's not nothing. So, we're looking at maybe trying to see if we could do that, and then, because we're signed in on the government site and everything, ready to kind of do that, we've just got to the part that it's saying, you got to have this, this, this done, and I'm like, wow, you know, and if we paid for it already, then why are we doing it? But if we could get the stuff needed, then maybe we could just submit it. I don't know if there's a submission fee or anything.
There was not. So, it wouldn't cost us anymore if we could...
That would be my plan, is try to get that, and we'll just do it, or, because they really don't want to change anything on the contract. They don't really care, because it's not...
Doesn't make any difference to them.
They don't make a difference to them, and then, they don't have to do the work.
And I do know, before the other drone, that before it was taken out, it was kind of the same thing through the company, they did all the paperwork for the county. And the only potential is, if we don't, you know, if we don't get it done, then we don't get it done, and then, I just won't be able to use it, you know, just have to do stuff manually, because it will take some time to get it done.
Can I ask an insurance question, but I came in after it wrecked last year, so why did it wreck? What can we...
Operator error. Operator error.
So...
And this one has a lot of different toys.
I, we paid a pretty good claim out on the last one, so just...
So, this one does have a lot more of the avoidance and everything like that, but we did have an operator that was running it when it was telling him that he was bypassing the safety parts, and so...
And he's no longer with us.
So, who are returning, who's going to be the new operator?
Right there.
Yes, and I've already went through the process and got my licenses.
Okay.
So, what's the total cost that it's going to take to get this thing licensed and approved?
For going this route, it's no cost.
We spent thirty thou, thirty what thousand?
Yeah, on the drone itself.
And this is part of the package with it.
So, the drone inventory was, oh, sorry, was forty-four thousand.
Forty-four.
And then, all my licenses, and then, so that's where we're at.
So, that's all included, the licensing is part of the purchase?
The licenses was paid by the county.
Oh, okay. So, it's in addition?
Yeah, and that's all done. They was, they had to take the test, seventy-five dollars for the tests, I had to take four, and then, I had to take the FAA exam, which was two seventy-five, if I remember right.
And that's all just because new employment, you know, that's not a yearly thing, it's just getting back up there.
If we take the lock, stock, and barrel agreement as they, what's our exposure, possible exposure to it?
I'm not exactly sure. I'm not familiar enough with how the drones work to know how operation of the drone and operation of the agreement could possibly give Hialeah a claim of action against us. I don't know how that would, how it could play out, so I'll have to get with...
I think most of what they're trying to protect theirself is, if they put that document together, is this is what we do in this case, then, you know, that it don't come back like, well, you guys rent that up, you know, of how, and...
And so, this is a contract that was generated through just the county's funds that have already been expended to purchase the drone, and this is just part of that overall agreement?
It was, it was part of when we bought the drone, so that comes with it.
This comes with, so this is a service that comes with the purchase of the drone?
Yes.
And I think... Kind of how it was, like you were saying with the last one, it was the same kind of situation, and then, they licensed it, and then, we get the approval from the state, and then, they're gone, they're gone, they don't, they don't want to do more work.
And Buddy was involved with the drone before that, and I have visited with him, and he's said the same thing. We signed these papers before with the old drone.
Well, depending on legal approval, the mayor may not have looked at it. Same thing with me. Depending on the time it went through, sometimes, we don't have time to look at it if it's only submitted through the agenda request. So, those questions may not have come up, just simply because we didn't have a chance to review. Doesn't make it right.
Well, and the, I'm willing to sign this, because it is part of our package deal, but I would still like just a piece in there that says, your authorization or your, your authority ends such and such a time. I mean, if not forever.
You could either say, authority to represent the party, or the authority to represent the client ends at final production and execution of said documents. I mean, it could be that simple. I don't know if they're going to be willing to go back and look at the contract and say, yeah, we'll modify it in this case.
Well, we get that to whatever and send it to them, and then, if they reject it, then we have further conversation, but... What do you think?
You know, I, again, I don't think there's any, there's no cost involved here, we've already paid for it. I guess the risk of some, you know, future is mostly on our part, how well we operate it and everything else. So, I don't know if there's a lot of risk to Bannet County, but I agree, they're probably, when we authorize the money, we could put in there that it's, you know, for a set period of time, ninety days or whatever, you know, that...
Completion of this agreement.
On the completion of this agreement, there is no binding agreement past this, or something like that. I'm not an attorney, don't want to be, I've seen that job.
I can, I can get you a line, you can add in there.
Okay, and I guess by them accepting, you know, whatever it is, they would at least acknowledge, you know, the addendum that we would put on there, so it's not like, I mean, there would be disclosure of it.
Could we get, like, approval upon having that added? And then, I could see if they care whether it's just written on there, or if they, or they want to hurry and send us one, but then, with that added, one way or the other, that you are... one, but then with that added, one way or the other, that you are okay with?
We're not out anything with that. Let's do that. You know, send it and say, we have agreed, but will you at least review this and see if you'll accept this? We're not out anything.
Okay.
I'm good with that. Our motion that we go ahead and sign the agreement with Hialeah? Is that, how do you say it?
Hialeah. I'm motioning all in favor, say aye.
Aye. How do you say that last name?
I helped with the Hialeah. I'm not helping with blasting that guy.
Nowruchil?
My last name?
No, the guy that's on the contract.
Nicholas.
It's easy.
Thank you. Thanks Dana.
Next, talking about compulsory time accumulation. What we normally do is we try to use what budget we have and, and paid throughout the winter months. And then if we have more storm or more hours, then that turns into comp time that we start to give out to the guys. Right now, we've been blowing through our overtime budget and we don't have, we only have probably two guys that are close to fifty.
You've only had six storms. How are you going through all your overtime budget? We haven't had any storms this year.
It has. It's, it's different than Pocatello.
I live out there.
But yeah, I mean, we can show the hours that we put out and then it always has to happen on the weekend. It, I can't, I can't make the storms and when they happen and there's no other way of managing that. I know I get sometimes told both do this or flex that, but that's not a very easy possibility to do. And the thing is, is we save a lot of our work, like fixing signs and culverts and all that at these months. So when we have a day, so I can also off of our asset management, have every hour in what they're doing, which I don't think a lot of places can do that with their personnel. And I can say what job they're doing and what they're fixing. So we utilize our time very well. It's, but that's where we're at. If we're supposed to get a snowmageddon by the end of today and it's going to go through the weekend. And if it happens, there's going to be people I can't call in because they're already...
So how many hours are you at now, you say?
I got a list of everybody. I've only got two that are higher. Most of them are like eight hours, six hours, seven hours. But I have one at thirty-one, one at fifty-four, one at twenty-one. That's my three highest.
So Kyle and I talked about this because I told them last time we had memo was probably from Dan Copeland. So it needed updated. And as Kyle said, what they do is they use all their overtime money first. Once our overtime money is exhausted, then it starts turning into comp. With our leave policy that we have, employees have to use comp before they can use vacation. That's your incentive for them to get this time off the books. So...
Do you have a cap on the comp?
Yes. Um, well...
Federal cap is two forty.
But we put the cap at two hundred, trying to discourage getting to that two forty mark. But once we do get to that two forty mark, they have to pay it. We have to pay it. Once we get to that point, the department will, well, the commission will be involved because that will be a reallocation of funds most likely because, again, all the overtime money's been exhausted. So, so this was mostly an update on, of the letter, but also a good time for Kyle to update on, or wrap with that overtime and...
Well, and this, this just says you, you can go over the fifty hours is all this memo says. I'd like a max on here that we talk about and then you come back in and talk to us. I mean, if you...
But the goal that we say in, in our policy is fifty hours.
Well, the commission has to approve anything over fifty hours.
Yeah.
But where you're being so broad and...
Now, you're wanting to say I can go above fifty hours with no max is what this says to me.
And for everybody else...
I hope we don't go...
And I would like, so if you hit a hundred hours, you come back in and talk to us.
Yep.
Something of that nature.
I wouldn't go that high. I would go probably eighty.
You might be surprised how fast that's going to run.
Well, and I agree with that, but all these storms of the centuries that we all laugh about, that they can come or they may not come. So at least all this...
I'm just saying that him and Buddy have the, the discretion for fifty more hours. And if it gets above that fifty more hours, then you need to come back in and talk to us.
And Kyle, so you know what normally happens with, other than law enforcement because they're twenty-four seven, if I have a person in my office that's over fifty, I come talk about that person specifically. You've not had to do that. And so that's...
Well, that's why we're, because kind of before, years in the past, it was like, besides these departments, but I don't think it was actually spelled out really. And so we kind of wanted to clarify that because I was kind of under the thing, well, we're one of the departments that could go over.
That's because we have the memo from Dan Copeland that had been signed by the board. Because that was so old, it really doesn't apply.
Yeah. That had to be about eight years ago, eight or nine. So, a recommendation? What do you think was, what would you think would be a, what's our solution to this?
My solution to this?
Yeah.
Um, I know that everybody loves comp time because you've already paid for the employees to be here. But my solution is, and that's not to make less overtime, but that I have an overtime budget that, that I can utilize and I don't use comp time.
And we currently give him an overtime budget, which most departments do not get it, other than sheriff and jail and over here at the detention center.
Because to, to fix what we have is, is our snow plowing, it's just not like if you gave us an employee, gave me a new employee, maybe even two new employees, that would not fix the problem because it takes our whole crew to go out. And so one guy, if you change the routes, wouldn't make up for the overtime. If you have, if you spend, right now, we're at thirty, thirty-seven thousand. If you put another thirty on there and then I don't have to worry about comp time, but then I don't, even if the, the total's sixty thousand or say a hundred thousand, that's still cheaper than me hiring more people.
Well, and that, and that's been proven. If you're not paying a little bit of overtime or a little bit of comp time, you're overstaffed. Because it's been proven that overtime or comp time is cheaper than hiring new bodies. I agree with your assessment there. And so you've got to have a little bit of that or you're, you're overstaffed.
To put it in perspective, the sheriff's budget has one hundred and two thousand dollars for overtime.
Okay.
So if we were to increase, say Kyle's budget to a hundred and two thousand dollars, that's less employees that get called out normally only in winter months. The sheriff's office...
It's twelve months.
It's twelve months.
Yeah.
So that's why the overtime budget that Ron Bridges went allowed is not the same as what, say, the sheriff's office would be. Also, the sheriff's office flexes their deputies when they possibly can.
Okay. So between now and budgeting season, I mean, that's the one thing we, you know, we really need to look at is that overtime and see if we don't have to go through these things every year. But...
Well, and, and since you brought it up, there is, they work four days a week. You don't have to work four days a week. During the winter months, you could be covering Fridays.
Right now...
You could work five days a week.
We're working five days a week.
Are you now?
This one they did too.
Well, we switched to in the winter.
Okay, okay. Just, just your operators, not everybody else, huh? Or is everybody in your office working?
Everybody in our office works.
Okay, I thought...
I, I, I'm not going to say me or Buddy is in there every Friday, but when we have meetings at night with groomer and all that stuff, if we take off on Friday...
You guys aren't the same.
Yeah. But yes, every...
You guys are sour.
Our shop, our weed and mosquito, everybody's on that because they help with plowing some of these parking lots for the county and stuff. So we're all on Friday.
I was misinformed then. Because I thought it was still four days a week. And so there's a day right there. I mean, it's pretty simple.
We're trying everything. We're, we're keeping track of how these storms hit last year, this year, and trying to figure out how we can do it. It's just hard. It is that way. I mean, I'm a snowmobiler and I'm depressed on the snow this year. It doesn't seem like we've got a lot, but they were up at the ski resort and that was kind of what my update is, is talking about that. But we're having trouble with the public thinking that we're like barrel policy and stuff. And so here's, you know, what do you do when the ski resort does parties every night and night skiing until ten or so at night. And the other night, we got called in by the sheriff, so it was an emergency. But we're working hours all through the night to, through the black ice and stuff. So it's, it's hard to mitigate and try to work out my overtime when them things happen like that.
That's, that's why you're getting the big bucks, Kyle. I, I mean, I applaud workers that go out in the snow. I mean, I've always appreciated being able to get to work because somebody had been out early or late to make sure we could all get there safely. And so I understand, I understand the snow plowing. Living where I did my whole life, the best roads we have are in the county. You know, till you hit the city of Pocatello, then you're in trouble. But, so I appreciate that. Just do what you can to, you know, in the next budgeting. So I guess the ask today is...
Is just going over fifty, but if you guys want to agree, I'm, I have no problem if when we hit another number, whether it's a hundred or whatever, that we come and ask again. I'm hoping that, like I said, I'm looking at it as in a business standpoint and I don't make money if my guys are gone. So comp time to me is...
It is what it is. I mean, if we got to plow for safety and everything else, we're going to have to do that, I guess. That's, so do we just need to put a different number on there?
I'd just put a...
A different memo?
A max of a hundred.
Okay. Let's try it.
A new memo with a max, max of a hundred. And then you come back and talk to us after, if you have an employee that goes over a hundred.
Yep.
And then budgeting season, we'll readdress all of this again, I'm sure. So, okay, I'm good with that.
Okay. Update.
All right.
Boy, we're a long time in this meeting.
Hi, man.
This Jeff's not here.
Yeah, you can come out.
I thought Carol...
I'll watch you do some of the fleet stuff.
I didn't think it was speed dating.
It is.
Thank you. We can't help who's in front of us, so...
To us and we'll...
It is what it is.
We still didn't do this other one either. The memo on end.
Oh, we'll do that when we do...
Oh, yeah. And that's for the overtime? Yeah, just for you might have not known, we, we've told the commission a little bit before, but our overtime budget for that was, been the same for twenty years. And where it's making it look worse on us is these hours aren't the same as what people had before for overtime. So we've got cut down on hours and added road miles. So we're, we're trying in every way to mitigate or to manage our overtime the best we can.
And wages have increased?
Yeah, there's a lot of factors.
Also FYI, our sheriff's office hasn't changed for the last three years.
Yeah, so...
So it's just looking at that update of...
So how, how many miles you running now? It used to be four hundred. How many you running now? How many you plowing?
It's like four eighty, four ninety.
People don't understand, they don't understand what growth does to the infrastructure.
Well, and what we talked about before is we grew like, before it was within ten years, you had got a mile or something. And in the last three years, we've, we've increased like seventeen miles. So it's, it's been, I will see what it does from now on and how things are going to go in the coming year. But...
I mean, in theory, with the additional miles, there should be some additional tax revenue. I mean, if there's houses on those roads, there should be...
I usually figure that takes a few years to get to it.
Yeah, and there is a lag effect on that. But once you put those roads in, it, I mean, the liability's there and hopefully the houses going in there will help, help just by that. Okay, thank you.
Uh, but to make it, try to make it as speed dating as I can. On the road end of things, just to kind of give you an update on, I know you've got some information on it, but we do have two bridges being worked on that, that kind of have a county access underneath them. One is the two and a half mile, which goes up to the gun range. And talking with them, they have a couple small road closures for a certain amount of hours as they move a crane. But normally that one's going to still have one lane open at all times. The big talk right now is going through income on Highway ninety-one. We're looking at a closure from February seventeenth to June twenty-fifth, which they will be rerouting them on Income Road over and down Rapid Creek.
Come and look at your garage.
Right in front of my house.
So, so your fellow commissioner's going to have a lot of traffic.
I was going to say, it's good that you got that garage, doesn't it?
Isn't it? We did talk with ITD and they're going to provide some speed limit signs on Rapid Creek and Income Road, just to try to make sure traffic is going at a slower speed.
They have put a digital on both ends, down by the bank and then as you can...
We saw them, it was a real concern of the counties of driving through that small city.
Sheriff's office is one that needs to be contacted.
Yep.
So that's underneath freeway, right there.
So the first one that they're going to work on is right by our little income yard and it's with the railroad tracks and everything on ninety-one. Then the second that will make a lot of people happy is right by Ernie's house and going with or Rapid Creek Road. And so then they're going to have to do the same kind of detour, just the opposite way.
Yeah, I'm going to have to go around Income Road to get to my home.
Can't you just park an outfit on the other side? Park it down where your mom used to live and Jake walk down there with the electric bike. You can run down there. So when are they going to do the bridge by Solis?
I don't know on that one.
Because they, I was talking with Joel and he said they come talk them and I think it's right in there.
That was scheduled for this past year.
Yeah.
And they was waiting for the city engineer and he didn't get the information to them. So it's been backed up.
So it's going to be a mess if you live in Income.
So the only thing that we know of is what they're contacting us with, that deal with a county road. But the ones that we're letting utilize the income yard area, they're on the one end there. Wadsworth Brothers, they told me that they're doing their job for them is three bridges and it's the, the on and off ramp on the south end or on the east end of town and the one right there with the railroad and then the one by Rapid Creek. That's the three that they are doing. They were hoping to get at least half of that done this summer. So they're going to be, talking to the state, they were, they're actually looking at working twenty-four seven.
Two years?
And it's two summers because they have, they only have this set period of time that they'll let them work on it. So they're going to work twenty-four seven because they, they don't want the interstate to be...
So what's that going to do with Marsh Creek Road?
Not a thing.
I'll bet you there would be a lot of traffic going down the Marsh Creek Road. If they don't want to go, oh, clear up, you know, around through there, some of them may just choose to go down there.
Instead of like getting off of the...
Yeah, they may just go down Marsh Creek Road. So, I don't know. It'd be interesting to monitor, see what, see if that affects them.
Yeah, they'll, when they like close the on and off and doing them ones, yeah, we're probably see more on the old highway and by Marsh Creek because they can't get off at Income.
It'll be interesting in a couple of years. Glad you're living out there. I'd say I'll go park your, an outfit down there by your mom and dad's old place.
My nephew owns Sam Lish's old place.
Okay. Get you a little electric bike.
But that's what's going on with bridges. Other bridges that are going this year are two bridges for the county. One's on Hawkins Road and one's on East Sublet, right there by Arimole. This is that, that grant program that Nancy helped with. We had two bridges that were in the shape that we could get in. We just had a meeting with them yesterday going over preliminary... going over preliminary designs and stuff like that. There'll be some road closures when them happen too, but I don't know which one they're looking at starting with, but in the next couple of years we'll be
Widening them or just redoing them?
Both. Um, yeah, both. We're widening them for the new kind of standards we have, but then, uh, one, the deck was bad and the one on Hawkins, we were looking at maybe just redecking it and then they seen the year and it was like forty-two or something and they just said, let's replace it. They actually did a, a million and a half on each bridge, but with us looking at designs and what you really need and stuff like that, I think we're at like two hundred and fifty on the one and a little more on the other, but we're trying to save, do them in a way and, and we're trying to work with all the counties to do the same, to not just, cause the money's there, just spend. If they all, if we all can cut it down on just what we need, then they can do another loop around and do more bridges.
And they can put that bridge over at Twin Falls across.
But
When those bridges get done, can you just, I know it's a couple of years out, but just make sure we know, cause we'll need to update our bridges on assets.
Yep. Yeah, we'll have all that stuff. Um, our new dump trucks, we've got one and it's, we're utilizing it and it's got the wing and the sander and everything and it's been great. Uh, the guys really like the wing part. The other one has finally made it to Pocatello. They must have been quite the pain. We went to Salt Lake twice, rejected them. It's not the truck itself, it's the person putting, the company putting on the beds and the wings and their welds are like not even existent.
Really?
So, we've had to spend a little more effort to get these things correct, but I think we're about done with that.
Do you have the last invoice in your?
It's on the
And we'll pick it up next Thursday.
At some point, do you start getting a little nervous about what you're not seeing? I mean, is there any grounds to reject that one? Or just go, no, we, this is what we're paying for?
So there, there is a warranty through Viking Kives is a company out of Salt Lake that's fitting the trucks. And you got a year warranty typically on everything, so hopefully we can work out all the kinks at that point. But yeah, moving forward, I, this has kind of been my first round with Kenworth and Viking Kives and Kenworth has been awesome, but I don't know that we'll go through this company again. Um, I'm gonna talk with Cat and see if possibly they could fit the trucks or just kind of find a more local
Or even depending on what we have on staff, whether we just fit them. Right now, our, our fab and welder guy could run circles around anybody, but he's retiring, so we'll see what we have, but we could also just have the parts come to us and we could fit up, but.
There are legislation going through or talked about of being able to deny bids if you got a vendor that is not up to spar, up to where you want them. So hopefully that'll pass.
And these guys also, cause these trucks have been out ordered for a long time, um, they over, overdid theirself, I think. Now they're just trying to get them out of there and throwing them together, cause they have so many lined up and so many people out at them, but.
So we had ordered them, let's see, it would have been FY twenty-four, ordered them in October and
So October of twenty-three?
Yes, and Kenworth received the trucks in May of twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
And then they sat there from May clear until December when we received the first truck. And literally just got the, the other truck hit Pocatello yesterday.
It's supposed to be three weeks between trucks, but
Yeah, it's been, it would have been, but I went down to Salt Lake and we wouldn't take it back, so.
But one of the big things we're working on right now is like with fleet and our new asset management, where we've started to switch over, we're gonna have a different kind of way, we're rebilling. Um, I know a question came up on, one of the things we're looking at is, is for the depth or for washers and electrical nuts and brake cleaner, cause you have to use lots of that doing, you know, your mechanicing, is we do kind of like the X factor. Um, problem I don't necessarily like is it's how we did it in the past or doing it currently is we take what we've spent on them miscellaneous parts and then we divvy it out throughout the departments of who's got cars and whatever and it's set up like that. So sometimes you'll get somebody that hasn't even took their car to the shop or anything and they'll get a bill for four dollars or something. I'm like, what's going on? I think we need to look at it and I'd work with Christie on just having just a percentage or whatever and that's just on the bill and that only gets charged as these vehicles are getting worked on. So the ones that are getting worked on are paying that little bit because they're the ones using the washers or whatever, not it's kind of would be the same thing, you're getting that money back, but with the percentage each repair, not.
So this came up yesterday because, um, Fairgrounds had a bill for roughly fifteen dollars, but they have no services performed per se. And so I called Buddy and talked to him about, talked through it and it makes sense to charge a per car basis, because even as we talked about the fleet vehicle or the pool vehicles, the car may be taken out there for them to fill the washer fluid, or they may do a quick spot inspection of one of the cars before it goes to Boise. Well, that's not a billable service, so it's not really being charged out, because they really didn't do anything, but they're using shop towels, they're using, um, the windshield fluid to top it off, things like that. So we still need to figure out how we can charge something for all those incidentals, because it's too hard to charge it on a per car basis, especially with like windshield microfluid or the towels.
Cause we don't charge
Take it in anywhere and you're gonna get a service charge.
Well, and we, and we don't charge for any labor, you know, and I don't know if that's
Everybody in the county has got to help pay the maintenance bill. It's just part of, it's a fixed cost that we have to share. However, we can label it anything we want. But it's just basically because your shop is out there, everybody's gotta help pay the bill. Someday they will have to have it. And so it's just accounting.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with somebody getting a fifteen dollar bill for heaven's sakes, because your shop is providing all that service.
It's, we're a nonprofit.
So are we.
We're not trying to make money, we're just trying to pay for the stuff that gets used.
I don't have a problem with somebody getting a bill, a, a monthly or an annual fee for whatever, whatever that number's gonna be.
And we've got six cars out of the fourteen, um, and starting to work through the new cars in the fleet that are coming in, so. Buddy's been working on that, trying to get them, we've learned some things and, and
We'll go into detail.
We'll get better and, and stuff like that, but I think mostly it's going pretty good and stuff like that. It looks, when we talk about small fleet again, we have, um, which I know that Commissioner Moser's asked before is when you have these plans, what's not, just this year, let's look at, a plan needs to be this, we, we've worked out with our small fleet, at least we can go thirty years out. So when budget, one thing we're gonna look at is to show you where we're gonna be and how that's gonna go, um, if we keep with this plan that we're on. But we'll be able to show out as far as you want. But it cuts about in half of what we spent last year on small fleet, but there's, it's still a little higher for twenty-six if, you know, there's, we're looking at, what, four hundred and fifty-ish thousand dollars to, to catch back up. But it is what it is to get.
Maybe since budget's gonna be coming up, if you guys have next year's plan of what vehicles are gonna be replaced, maybe we can do an update to the board before we send sheets out to departments and in that way you'll be sending those to those departments of what they need to ask for, but then you'll have a pre of what those people are gonna turn in, so that you know what's in mind.
Yeah, good idea.
They're really good about working with me, giving me that information, but it'll be good to have everywhere.
Um, we've been working on our fuel stuff. We're trying to get it, the, um, the landfill and event center, they've put in level monitors and level, level fill or whatever.
Yeah, we'll keep the, both landfill and event center at a, a keep full system. We'll, we'll keep them above thirty percent. Anytime it hits thirty, the monitor will then contact Conrad, Conrad will come fill it up. And then all the bills will be directly sent to, um, event center and the landfill, rather than us kind of being the bank and doing the rebuild, so.
Okay.
And then we did that also with the landfill on oils. So, um, I got with Dylan, we got all the oils that they use all the time. Um, got a pump set up and he's just gonna have to manage, I guess, when they run out of barrels, they'll have to order a new barrel and and that again will be done through their billing too, so.
So this auto fill, was that part of the new contract or something else you set up?
Kinda. Um, it's something I had in the works with Conrad before. And then as we got close to the, um, new contract, they kind of pulled back a little bit, cause they weren't sure that they were gonna get the bid, I think, and and now we're, yeah, moving forward with it. So it'll be really nice. Our, our old process, when Danny was our parts guy, he'd have to go to bid that morning to, to order fuel. And so it'd take, you know, two, three hours of his time in order just to order fuel and now it's, we won't have any of that time gained, so it should be nice.
My only problem with that is, um, you're taking some intuition out of that. If you know the prices are gonna go down or you know the prices are gonna go up, instead of automatically making that happen, you know, um, cause sometimes how much are you holding up there? How many gallons are you talking for them to drop in?
Um, so we have We have two twelve thousand gallon tanks.
Okay, so are they bringing in a tanker?
Yep.
And so sometimes, uh, if the price is going down, you don't wanna, you may wanna wait a day or two or whatever, instead of automatically, or if it's going up, then you wanna bring in a full tanker and fill it, instead of going to that thirty percent. Service station's been doing that for years, uh, monitoring the up and down. So the autom, I don't have a problem with the system or even the automatic, but if somebody looking at that, go, somebody should approve that, depending on what some factors, rather than just trusting Conrad and Mishoff just to, but, cause you're, you, you could be thousands of dollars if you wait two days or you buy two days ahead of when you normally would, depending on whether you know what the prices are doing.
And I don't think we blocked in on like a level pay thing or anything like that.
No, but when you order it, the automatic ordering.
Yeah, I mean, or even the automatic ordering.
Yeah, cause
They just did the sensors for us so that we could easily tell, cause you had a guy go out there and they got a little gauge on the tank and then you put your formula in and how many gallons. So we initially started just so that we can have that in our, so we know our stocks.
Yeah, I, I'm okay with the, the Vida Root or the automatic, but the automatically calling them up and ordering it, I think somebody ought to at least look at that and say, maybe now's a good time before prices go up next week to pull a full load in. Uh, you know, you may be at forty percent, but if you know the prices are gonna go up by external factors, you can save thousands of dollars on a, on a truck. Or vice versa, if you know the prices are going down, you may wanna wait a week before you I don't, I don't like the automatically calling them up and ordering them without some human
Kind of like with propane auto fill, you know, sometimes you can do that.
Just, just a recommendation, cause I, service stations have been using that for years. They, they know the price is going up, man, they, they call up and order fuel that they want it that day, because it makes a difference of four or five cents.
Yeah.
So, just to help you on your budgeting.
No, and like I say, that'll be good, cause how we move forward, but, cause we haven't really set any of that up, we're just looking.
Okay.
What else?
I think I'm good. What questions?
I got one for you.
Okay.
So we talked about the no spray signs.
Okay.
We don't have a fee for that.
No, we do.
Where is it? Is it on the fee?
I thought
Putting the signs up?
I thought Christie, her, Davenport had found it. She was
Oh, okay, the last she told me she couldn't find it.
Yeah.
And that's the last information I had.
Sorry for the confusion, but we, we put that in when we did, it wasn't last fee, but it was the one before.
Cause you charge for signs, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. She looked, she was looking for it and she couldn't find it. And so that's why I knew you was coming, I was gonna bring it up.
Yeah, so we, we did end up finding
Other color, I mean, I know that.
We was talking about some other fee. And, uh,
When we did that, it's like, I was telling Christie that we didn't have any fees for any of our stuff and since we're getting more and more into that electronic permitting and stuff, we worked with
I just wanted to make sure it was there, cause we've had letters coming in and
Yes, and it seems like every person, and sorry that you guys are getting a lot of calls too, but every person that had a no spray sign must be about eighty years or older. And so we're trying to do all we can to help them through this process and, and comfort them on that they don't have to pay and a few things, so. But the main thing with these permits is we can get them into our system, then we can see them on our map where they're at, it's just bringing it into the, the century, so.
And, um, I got cornered the other day and so did Christie downstairs, the, by Ray Tasm. Uh, have you been up looking at that road to see?
His driveway and stuff?
Yeah, he claims there's water coming down and sloughing off on that one side. I, so if you just go look at that and see what we can do.
We tried a bunch and I, I'll get with Dustin, our road manager, again on it, cause we tried a few times and could never get him at home and then Dustin knows him pretty good.
Go to Walmart, you'll run into him or he'll run into you, into Ray.
Yes, and we just, the last time we had talked and he had talked to Commissioner Moser, it was like snow and frozen and everything and we were kind of like, can we, can we wait till there's some water and stuff like that?
I think it was last week when we did, it was warm and we had water coming down and he claims that it's sloughing off on that. It's coming across and sloughing, you know, part of, and which we don't want it coming back underneath that asphalt, you know, just, if you get a chance, go look at that and see if there's any damage there and and, uh, we can keep Ray hap, well, we're not gonna keep Ray happy, but
We're on the record.
Yeah, so.
One other road. Inman. Is there any thoughts of extending asphalt?
Yes, um, it's on one of our, so we, we've got a few different sections and it seems like everybody that's ever been in these positions shy away from them. Um, Inman is one of them. Of widening and there's getting to be more and more houses up Inman and so we were looking at the process and what we would need to do, cause that's a road that I feel is getting to the point that it does need to be. The problem we're having a little bit is the width is what we're looking at and we've been looking at that road is width and um, drainage and then their phone, some of the services they put like almost right in the road, so it would take a little bit, but I, that's a project that we would like to do.
I mean, it is. I'm, I'm talking about Rapid Creek getting busy here. I mean, the number of four wheelers that go up in the summer and the number of snowmobilers that go up, plus there's seventeen new homes up there.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a combination. They've been up there for a while.
So it, it, yeah, with all the new homes and stuff, it's starting to hit where we would pave it, so we would just go pave it, but we wanna try to see what we can do to make the widths and everything also while we're there. We've got a few roads like that. It's, some of our other kind of keep you up at night kind of things that are in the back of our mind is we have the Garden Creek um, gap that's narrow and kind of dangerous and people have asked about guard rail and a few things there. Um, I've been talking with Commissioner Huff on a few of them. Um, Marsh Creek Road where the dugout is just after the cement plant.
Wagner.
Wagner Road. There's a few of these that are, they're a little complex. And so they've just kind of been looked over, but we're, we're trying to see what we can do. But that is, Inman was, we had Inman and Wagner, which is down the old highway farther. It's getting enough houses up it that we're looking at doing the same thing with it.
They still call it Wagner or is it two and a half?
Two and a half Wagner. Two and a half Wagner.
It's got two names.
It's got two names.
It does, a lot of others do too, but yeah.
But if you have any, any of them come up to you, please let us know and we are trying to slowly work through them. This last fall, we did a bunch, well, we fixed the turn at the top of Jackson Creek. It's been kind of a, um, there for a long time, made that safe. And then we've been creating turnarounds where we never had any. And so when we try to do maintenance, we're doing a 20-point turn. We've worked with, um, fishing game and BLM and Forest Service to try to do that. So we've been trying to catch up on some things that have been kind of overlooked.
Whatever happened to that DMC? Did we ever widen that to put a bike path, walk path? We, that was what we talked with Brad about, I, just curious.
Yeah, we have a bike path that goes all the way around the golf course and everything and back into town.
I haven't been back up there, that was a project that we, Larry, was that the guy's name? Bingo money.
We, we got it done.
Okay, just curious.
It's installed.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If I'd make a motion that we go ahead and approve the leave without pay that we discussed in the executive session.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye. Now, we'll go ahead and go into commissioners' reports, the invoices.
Have you guys been here for this?
No, we're good, thank you.
Nope, dog.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any problems with anything on the consent agenda.
Send it to the chairman.
I am gonna start holding, I talked to Christie, I'm gonna start holding the, our invoices and take them all down in one shot. I was used to sending them twice a week and now we're not in such a push, so I had to take them down a bit because I couldn't remember if I had taken it. So I'll, I'll just hold those until Wednesday afternoon in the computer office.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion that we approve the items on the consent agenda.
We have motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 That was for workers' comp, it's gonna be split between all of the different departments.
Did you see the name on it? Ketron?
Oh, I know. Sometimes it takes forever for some of those payroll people to.
I was looking at that.
I still have revenue stuff that comes in, it's Valerie Lisbon, she's been retired for 15 years.
I missed jury deal. Three cents? We made checks out for three cents and 10 cents and seven cents and.
Mileage.
So, there, yeah, it's mileage, there's for seven, $7.32 total.
Now are they also being paid their jury fee?
No, these are just mileage. That's when I looked at that.
Cause usually the mileage is included with the juror fee. Do you have a separate batch for the jury?
Yeah.
Okay, so the checks will be combined, but for whatever reason, they, I guess, just did the mileage in a separate batch?
Okay, I, I just, I mean, we're spending $5 for a $3 check.
I assumed the check would combine all those.
Yeah, they will.
Yeah, different accounts.
Overall, they will, I just, I'm not sure why they did them in two batches, I'll double check that though.
And then.
Usually we do the jury and the mileage in one batch.
On the credit card, we'll pay them all, but I wanna have a discussion, I wanna have Wes come in and talk to us about his, uh.
The giveaways?
Giveaways.
Yeah.
And that's what Jeff, Wes is called Jeff.
Really, he's already called Wes or Jeff?
And Jeff wants to talk about it, that's what the note that Christie sent to me was. But I think we need to have him come in and have a conversation about that. With that being said.